Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Dawson County Board of Representatives work session this Thursday, March 19th, 2020. We'll start out with new business first up. We have discussion of the Russell Creek Reservoir, Edoa Water and Sewer Authority, and General Manager Brooke Anderson is going to give us an update. Come on up, Brooke.
Good afternoon. I really appreciate the opportunity this afternoon to come and talk with you about a bright spot in this world of uncertainty. We want to talk with you a little bit about the Russell Creek Reservoir project. And in order to do that, we want to kind of set things up. We've prepared a video for the project because we're trying to get it documented from start to finish. And so, I want to sit down and let y'all watch about 13 minutes of the video, and then I'll be back to share with you a little bit more.
Water, it is one of the most vital substances on the planet. Without water, there would be no life. Without clean drinking water, Dawson County would not be able to grow and thrive. Dawson County, Georgia, nestled between the foothills of the North Georgia mountains and Lake Lanier, is an area full of life with rich history. The Russell Creek Reservoir is critical in supplying water to a future population of 126,000 people living in the area. It also serves as a valuable resource to residents of Dawson County and the many wildlife species who call the rivers and streams home. The Russell Creek Reservoir is the result of the steadfast dedication of the many community leaders who paved the way to transform the vision into reality. The Cherokee Indians thrived in the area until the great intrusion of 1829, a movement sparked by the discovery of gold in the area. By 1832, all remaining Cherokee territory was given to Georgia residents by the state in the land lottery. What remains are the names the Indians gave to the natural wonders of the land they called home. Edoa, Toto, Amacola, among many others. Created in 1857, Dawson County and Dawsonville are named for Judge William Crosby Dawson, a Georgia native who served in the state legislature as well as the United States Senate. History would soon prove that gold wasn't the only local resource to cause a rush. In 1919, the Eighteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution was passed, spawning the prohibition era. This ignited a new industry in North Georgia, driven by the demand for a local concoction: moonshine. Moonshiners in Dawson County secretly produced the illegal corn whiskey, and bootleggers ran the hot commodity to nearby cities like Atlanta. These operations set the standard for moonshine distribution during prohibition, earning Dawson County the reputation as the moonshine capital of the world. In an effort to outrun authorities, bootleggers modified their cars to achieve maximum speed on the backroads of Georgia. Once prohibition was abolished, the practice of modifying vehicles for racing continued. This gave birth to stock car racing, and eventually the sport of NASCAR. In addition to a rich heritage, Dawson County's local natural resources draw large numbers of outdoor enthusiasts and tourists. They enjoy attractions such as Amacola Falls State Park, home to the tallest cascading waterfall east of the Mississippi River. Tourists also enjoy corn mazes, pumpkin farms, canoeing and kayaking. In 1957, Lake Lanier was formed by flooding the Chattahoochee River. The lake spans 39,000 acres and provides water recreation opportunities for boaters, canoeists, anglers, and campers who come from miles around to enjoy the lake. The construction of the Georgia Highway 400 from Atlanta in the 1980s expanded accessibility, drawing even more visitors and positioning Dawson County for residential and retail expansion. From the gold rush to running moonshine, to the boom of tourism in the area, local water resources have played a critical role. Edoa, the Muskegon word for town, is fitting for an area which water has been central in creating a place for residents to live, work, and play. As the area began to develop, concerned local citizens understood the value of this treasured local resource. Their ongoing dedication led to the passage of legislation by Georgia's General Assembly in 1980, establishing the Edoa Water and Sewer Authority. Prior to this, the residents and visitors relied on wells and springs for their water, a method that was growing ever challenging as the demand for water increased with the expanding population. The authority's first order of business was collecting 900 customer contracts to justify funding for the organization. Board members divided the county and hit the road. Boots on the ground included Ben Overstreet, along with fellow board members Chairman Don Gordon, President of Dawson County Bank, Retired Army Lieutenant Colonel George David, Attorney William Jesse, and Frank Roberts, a retired medical photographer for the Veterans Administration.
So the need for additional water is important for growth and jobs and opportunities for our community, as well as other areas such as recreation.
Once the authority reached its customer goal, it secured a loan from the FHA and a grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission. The authority broke ground for a water plant and distribution system in 1985, and introduced water service in 1986 with a permit to draw 100,000 gallons of water per day from the swift-moving Edoa River. The authority's customer base grew steadily over the next several years, expanded access to Georgia Highway 400, and a housing boom in the early 1990s prompted the water systems' expansion. People were flocking to Dawson County. In the mid-1990s, an even greater opportunity knocked. Developers wanted to build the North Georgia Premium Outlet Mall on Highway 400, but plans could not proceed without a sewer system. The authority established a wastewater treatment plant and collection system to satisfy the need in 1996, nine months after the decision to introduce sewer services was made. As of 2018, the authority is permitted to withdraw up to 5.5 million gallons per day for water treatment and 1 million gallons per day for wastewater treatment. The authority remains committed to the company's core values: excellence, integrity, stewardship, commitment, efficiency, and of course, vision. With tremendous growth, the authority knew it needed additional water supply. Beginning in 2004, the authority hosted a series of technical advisory meetings. They invited state and federal agencies, environmental advocates, and other interested stakeholders. These meetings were very productive and created an open, transparent environment between all parties. A primary concern for many was the existence of threatened and endangered species in the Edoa River. But first, the authority needed to know how much water Dawson County needed for the next 50 years. The 2006 Projection of Water Supply Needs Study determined the authority's water demand would exceed 17.5 million gallons per day by 2057. The Edoa Water and Sewer Authority conducted a careful assessment of options to increase water capacity while also preserving the rich history and natural resources that make this area of Dawson County so special. The first option for additional water supply was Lake Lanier. The authority evaluated getting a withdrawal permit from Lake Lanier. However, due to the tri-state water war, this option was not feasible. The authority then looked to its neighbors in Forsyth, Cherokee, and Hall Counties to purchase water. Again, due to the tri-state water war and the constraints on their own water supply, this option was not feasible. The authority then turned its attention to groundwater. After a lengthy study, this option was ruled out due to insufficient groundwater quantity in Dawson County. Finally, after these options were eliminated, the authority turned its attention to constructing a drinking water supply reservoir. Remembering the concerns expressed during the technical advisory meeting regarding the impact of reservoirs on threatened and endangered species in the Edoa River, the authority looked for creative and environmentally sensitive solutions for a reservoir. The concern was that reservoirs constructed in free-flowing streams and rivers disrupt the migration and spawning of threatened and endangered darters. The authority evaluated options to use and expand an existing reservoir to significantly reduce the impact to the darters. After considerable evaluation of alternatives, the authority focused on expanding the NRCS Watershed Dam Number 13. The proposed Russell Creek Reservoir will be a drought contingency pump storage reservoir. It will require the removal of the existing dam and construction of a new dam. The new dam will be 110 feet tall, 700 feet long, and 700 feet wide at the base. The Russell Creek Reservoir will replace the existing 11-acre lake with a 137-acre reservoir. Based on height, the more than 100-foot-tall dam will be in the top 5% of all dams across the United States and in the top 1% of dams in Georgia. The project area was originally owned by a Cherokee Indian named Childotter. His property was conveyed to Salus Palmer in the land lottery. In the mid-1800s, the Russell family built a grist mill and small dam and head race to convey water to the mill. This dam appears to be located near the proposed Russell Creek Reservoir. In 1963, the Soil Conservation Service constructed the existing dam Number 13 for flood control and sediment storage. The Russell Creek Reservoir project area is home to several diverse land and aquatic wildlife species. The authority took great care to understand how development of the reservoir would impact these habitats and create plans for minimizing disruption for these species. The authority worked closely with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, as well as the Corps of Engineers, to conduct ecological and environmental impact studies. Together, they developed strategies for mitigating the effects on these species and promote their success in the ecology. These strategies include clearing the timber in the winter months to avoid impact to the northern Long-eared Bait. They also include timing construction activities in the Edoa River to avoid impacts to the threatened and endangered darter species. As originally permitted, a new intake and pump station would have been constructed on the Edoa River to pump water to fill the reservoir. The authority now plans to modify its existing intake and pump station at the Hightower Water Treatment Facility. This will minimize impacts to the threatened and endangered darters. In order to design and build a reservoir, the authority needed approximately $25 million. Early in his first term, Governor Nathan Deal created the Governor's Water Supply Funding Program. This program allowed the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority to provide low-interest loans with creative terms to help build large water supply projects. The authority was awarded $25,500,000 in low-interest loans from the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority for the design and construction of the project. The authority received the Section 404 permit on July 21st, 2017, from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. After 13 years of permitting, the authority is now heading into the design phase of the project.
We expect to have the reservoir completed in the next five years, which is exciting.
On July 1st, 2018, the authority hired Goldar Associates and Whedeman &amp; Singleton to design the dam, pump station, and appurtenances. They plan to go to construction in 2021 and have the project completed in 2023. The Russell Creek Reservoir will become a tremendous resource for Dawson County.
Well, we're looking forward to this new reservoir, serving the needs of Dawson County for the next 40 years. So we're excited about having this completed and growing in our county.
Hopefully, that gives you a good sense of not only the history of the authority, but the county and the project, and how did we get to this moment in time where we are looking to construct a drinking water supply reservoir. So, that video takes us up to about 2017. So obviously, we kept moving since then. And today, I want to talk with you a little bit about where we are. The design phase is the construction phase. And so, as mentioned in the video, we're replacing an existing NRCS watershed lake that's about 11 acres. And we're replacing it with a 137-acre drinking water supply reservoir with a 110-foot-tall earth and dam. So the depth of the water in this new reservoir is going to be about 95 feet deep. So it's going to be very deep at the dam itself, and it will be able to hold approximately 1.3 billion gallons of water that would allow the reservoir to supply the authority and its customers 17.5 million gallons per day, as opposed to where we are today, which is about 5 and 1/2, well, which is 5 and 1/2 million gallons per day. And to put that in perspective, we're treating approximately half of that. So with the growth that we got, we still have quite a bit of room for growth while we get this project on the line. So, don't let 126,000 people worry, okay? We don't know when that's going to occur. You know, the projection was done pre-downturn, but that is the basis of the number to generate the need. The core, we're not allowing you to build a project that does not, that is larger than your need, okay? So you have to project the need, and at the time, that was a 50-year projection. Obviously, that was over 10 years ago, so now their projection is about 40 years looking forward. So, it's not a dream. It's not a fake news. We did get the permit. It is real. So, it's all good at the moment. Today, we have got the permit obtained. We have purchased our platinum credit. We purchased our stream credit. The land is purchased for the project, and cultural mitigation is completed. As the video mentioned, there's a grist mill, and head race, and tail race that was built back in the mid-1800s, and we had to document that as part of the project. So that's been completed, and funding is finalized, so we're moving forward. That's a picture of the northern Long-eared Bait that is endangered. And as the video mentioned, we have to clear the trees. I'll get to that in a second. We hired Goldar and Whedeman &amp; Singleton to complete the design artistic stage. Wherever we are today, we are at 95% design. The video did mention that we'd be going to construction in '21. We're actually going to be going to construction later this summer. So we're about a year ahead of schedule on construction. In order to do it, we have to design the project to state dam standard as well as NRCS standard. As the video mentioned, we have this northern Long-eared Bait. We have to harvest the trees in the winter, because in the wintertime, these bats go to Tennessee and hang out in caves, all pun intended. And then in the summertime, they come and they roost in pine trees. So we've got to get the trees cleared out before they come back and get confused.
And where would they go with all those trees?
There'll be trees right next door. They just move down the street a little bit. And we have to remove the entire existing dam, so all of the dam has to be removed as it's there today. So this is a little bit convoluted, but take my word for it. We're going to expand the intake structure at the water plant, and we're going to lay about 2 and 1/2 mile of 30-inch water line along the Edoa River from our water plant along the Edoa River up to the reservoir. That will allow us to fill the reservoir using pumps at the Hightower Water Treatment Facility. It will also allow us to gravity flow the water back from the treatment plant back to the head of the, from the reservoir back to the head of the treatment plant, so we only have to pump the water one time. And then the reservoir itself will be constructed on the far end. This is a schematic of a rendering of what the dam will look like. On the left-hand side of the picture, you see that big white glass spot? That is the auxiliary spillway. To put that picture in perspective, that auxiliary spillway is 300 feet wide and 1,000 feet long. We can have about six football games going on at the same time. Wouldn't recommend it, but we could. Currently, we are clearing trees for the first contract, and we began that in December. We have cleared all the trees, so we've met our requirement for the first contract for the dam and for the bait. And obviously, granted, it's been a bit of an issue lately, but as it drives out, we'll get that completed.
Brooke, if you'll go back, go back two slides for me, or somebody, go back one more slide. So the dark areas, just for pointing out, the dark areas in this slide are around the reservoir. Those are, those are trees that are there as well.
That is correct.
So that's the size and scope that we're impacting, all that dark areas' trees.
Okay. So the blue area?
The blue area is the...
That's correct.
Right, but all the rest of that darker area is trees.
That is correct. That is correct. And so, we, that is correct. Any questions? So, this is a little bit hard to read, but in 2020, May of 2020, we're going to be going to construction on the first phase, which will construct, which we will construct the router structure, which is a 110-foot-tall concrete structure, because it has about 4,000 cubic yards of concrete in it and a whole lot of steel. And that structure is going to allow us to pull water out of the reservoir at different depths, so we can get the best water quality from the lake depending on whether that's at, whether that's top, the middle, or the bottom, depending on the season. And then we will go construction on the dam in June of '21, so about 18 months later, we'll be getting started with the next project. And then the raw water pipeline and the Hightower Water Treatment Plant goes to construction in January of next year. We are taking an opportunity to expand the water plant from 5.5 million gallons per day to 6.9 million gallons per day, because we can do that without a lot of infrastructure construction. We can maximize what we have there today to expand that water plant, which will carry even further into the future with water capacity. So, things are in motion. Once we get the project completed, which is anticipated to be the first in the spring of '23, is when everything will be completed and constructed. At that point, it'll take about a year to fill. And about the spring of '24, we'll be having river cutting, because I'm going to have a full lake to have a river cutting, not a big hole in the ground. So picture looks better with water. And so, in spring of '24, we'll be cutting the river and inviting folks out and going from there. So, wanted to give you that update. I know we've talked, y'all are very familiar with this project, but it has been a while since I've had an opportunity to come and talk with you about it, and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Brooke.
Appreciate the update. It's very good. And I sure am glad I live in Dawson County.
Ain't you? I do too.
Yes. That video, if I wasn't here, I'd go there.
It makes me want to go there. Oh, wait a minute, I do live here.
Brooke, is there going to be any access to the, like, the trolling motors, fishing or...
Yeah. So real, part of the project, we're going to construct a boat ramp and a boat dock, and we're going to allow canoes, kayaks, electric trolling motor. We're envisioning that to be on a permitted basis, very similar to the way the state parks. You have to get a parking permit to go, something along that nature. It's not going to, it won't be like general public access. It'd be like a corral lake or something like that, it'd be a permitted use reservoir. Fishing will also go out. Do you have a question?
Can I fill a little trout?
A little warm for trout, but we put some dangre crappy and bass in that area.
I'll say, just from a leadership standpoint, I know this process has taken over 13 years, and for somebody, you know, you look at the video, and Sharon and I were just talking about some of the, some of the folks that were involved day one with, with Edoa Water and the big visions and the ideas that they had and how we've come to where we're at today. And this is another big project that is reflective of the people that are in the roles of Edoa Water now. So, the guys that started Edoa are those big shoes to fill, and your leadership is doing a good job, I think, with filling those. Thank you for looking beyond where we're at the next five, 10 years. These are long, long-term, big capital investment projects.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Brooke, you've done an awesome job too. How long have you been with it?
Little over 13 years.
Okay.
So, it's time flies when you have it fine.
Took y'all 13 of them years to get that permit, didn't it?
Yes, it did. It was one of them.
Oh, was it 10, was it 10 years?
13.
Was it really 13?
Yeah, well, we started 2004. We got the permit in 2017. So, yeah, 13 years to get the permit, yeah, so it takes a little while.
Brooke, thank you for all the good work you're doing.
Thank y'all very much for your work, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation of Secure the Vote, Help America Vote Act Grant Program, Chief Registrar of the Board of Elections. Chair Linda First. Glenn, come on up.
Thank you.
Trying to recoup some money.
Yeah. I wish it was more than this, but hey, you're doing a little bit helps, don't you?
That's right.
Good afternoon to everybody. I think it's, I guess, for the sake of everyone that may not know, this is a federal branded program through the Help America Vote Act, and it's money that's allocated to the Secretary of State's office for helping to offset some of the, the cost of the new election equipment, et cetera, that's come up. So, and everything's still a little new, so I apologize that I have everything that I'd like to put in a place that's just really definitive of what we're going to ask for, but everything has happened so fast, and we don't want to spin too fast without knowing, you know, if it's going to be something we absolutely need. If we can use what we already have, we're doing that. So, I actually handed out the quote that I got for cameras, and that was one of the things I put on here for, one of the things that the state, you probably hear it on the news, it's probably just repetitive on my part, but security is one of the biggest issues they're talking about at this time. So, we, at the chapel building, we have pretty much the panic buttons, and we have the alarm system, but the camera system is just kind of an added bonus there. But at the polling locations, we don't have those. We pretty much have to hire an off-duty police officer or someone, another poll officer to stay with the equipment at night if it's going to be set up for the night for elections the next day. So in doing that, I, I reached out to Danny Thompson and asked him about how they felt with ADMS, about having cameras there at the polling locations, and I think that was a project that they'd considered or had been considering because of past history with some things. And so I thought this might be a win-win situation. I don't know. We have it as a board, been able to discuss it, my board, thoroughly. So, but I wanted to present it to you, and this, this particular quote is the maximum of, he went ahead and just did a full quote on all cameras that would be what he thought would be, you know, a complete coverage. So we don't have to go that far. That's why you have a couple of written, what am I trying to say here, figures at the bottom, that basically gives you the full impact of what the 3-1 match would be. Some things are 3-1 matches, some are one-on-one. Security and accessibility, handicap accessibility is 3-1 matches. So I just kind of did a half of that, just in case, and just give an idea of what the state would refund on that if we chose to go that route. And obviously, we wouldn't do it if it was something we felt like was not, you know, necessary. And of course, any comments that are concerns that any of you have, please, you know, feel free to feed those back to us. The deadline is April, at the end of April, unless they extend it, and the state has talked about doing so and adding some other things to it. We just don't have a definitive answer on that yet. So, these are just some things that I presented to you that we were going to try to get a match on. The security paper, I did reach out to say, hey, is this considered under security, or is it just the general that we will have to purchase? And if it's security, of course, that would be a 3-1 match. And as you can see, we've already spent the $3,900 on the first 60 rings of paper. So that's pretty much that in a nutshell, to see how the commission wants me to move forward. If you're good with us doing the grant, if not, then of course, I can keep you up to date on what's coming up and what we can use the match for, and try to get the best, of course, for a meeting.
Questions for Glenn. Are these cameras inside or outside the facility for security purposes?
They're all inside and out.
They're both inside.
Every available angle is what he's quoted there, inside and out, every room. We would only need probably inside the voting room, and then again, we'd have to watch the angle on that. That's the thing, that I'm, I just want to make sure we're clear that that's a necessity for us there, and, and he assures me that it won't zoom in to a voter's vote.
Well, I think what we'll say is, yes, they will. So you can have their vote? So you can have their vote?
Right, that's right. So we'd have to make sure that we covered all that to make sure that people feel secure.
My follow-up question is timeline. Let's just say that we got to have some sort of security based on the information that I've seen for these polling places, based on the new stuff. What would be the timeline of an installation? I mean, if you gave him a green light, is it a month out or is it two months out?
It may sound like it's right away.
Okay.
Within a week or so, we could have it, a few days, even, you know. Talk like it, you know, at this time. So, and of course, we, with it, with the election being postponed until May, it's not as critical to get it done for the March elections. So we would have had to move forward, probably with something, you know, temporary until we either approve or disapprove this, so.
What is NVR? Install NVR system?
So, and that was a video recorder. I believe.
And what does that mean?
So it would record and have a hard drive that it records it to. So it would be great if you needed to go back and pull the video, then there's a, there's a recorder system.
Oh, okay, okay.
Glenn, did you say that, did the paper fall under security?
I'm not sure yet. They have not.
You sent that question?
Yes, I did, but they have not answered that yet, so. And again, they may be extending other things, so it just may be, I can say, just to get a heads up, I want to make sure we get this in and approved, because I know our meetings are, you know, I'll make sure I get it in so that I can get approval for, you know, the 15,000, that we can at least get that for purchases that we know are mandatory. Even if we don't do the security cameras, at least, you know, the things that we've already expended money on, like the heavier power cords that have to be used for this new equipment, what we currently have, those particular things that we make sure that we get that match somehow.
And the Secretary of State's making all these decisions himself?
Well, they already have the funding, so it's the federal, federal funding to them. So yes, they are allocating up to 15,000 for every county in the state. State-wide. And they're, you know, encouraging people to use it, obviously, so to help offset.
Is this company on our vendor's list? Is this one Talbert used with other cameras and stuff?
Yes. He's actually the one who recommended, gave me the number to call.
Now, will they kind of keep stuff the same?
Mm-hmm. Abundant.
Yeah, hopefully for a month or two, you know, changes, technology changes.
Yeah, because he said he knew how, he worked with, you know, you know, finance and he knew kind of how purchasing and all handled that. And so that was, that was a plus for me, if you already knew how all that works, so.
Good.
But again, that's something I guess we'll consider in our board. We, you know, we'll have to meet and discuss it.
Have you had many complaints about the new voting machines?
We have not. The only thing, the only complaints we've had when they pick up the security paper and they go, man, this must have cost a lot. That's the kind of thing, that's what they say, you know. But as far as the voting, everybody seems to like it. I've not heard anything negative about it, so, which is a plus, so.
When did you said the, I know that you said April is the deadline tendently now, but when, when do you meet with your board next in order to?
Hopefully April. We canceled yesterday's meeting because of, you know, so obvious reasons. So hopefully April 15th, that's when we meet. So that gives us really a tight turnaround. Yes, the 30th of April, unless they extend it. But as long as we have things in, you know, purchased and a receipt for it, then I don't know about the camera situation, I'd have to ask about, hopefully, if they make it, make this extension on that if they couldn't get it done by the 30th. But the other things I already have purchased, I can send you. And they, they have the people send it in as they give anyway, so. I just wanted to make sure I get the best, I mean, for our book, you know.
I notice on here it's a reimbursable grant, so you have to expend the money ahead of it.
Yes, yes.
Danny, y'all working together to facilitate word and cameras?
That's correct. We spoke on the phone, Talbert and I have actually went out, visited the site locations and everything and, you know, tried to work with the vendor to make sure that we're maximizing coverage of points of entry and the actual polling locations inside the stations. We've also reassured our people that they will not be in common areas that affect any privacy issues or anything of that nature.
Okay.
And that's why I wanted to reach out to him, because he's better, better in knowledge in that area than I would be, so, yes.
Thank you.
So the fact that you may not meet again until April 15th, is there a way that you can find out or call and find out if they're going to probably extend this deadline due to COVID-19?
Yes.
Pandemic that we're dealing with?
I can do that.
Give you more time, as you may, you may need to call a special meeting.
Yes, and we talked about that too.
To accomplish that, get it in on the deadline, because obviously, if you approve something on the 15th and then you order it on the 16th, you may not get it up by the 30th, which means you wouldn't get a reimbursement.
Right.
So.
So will we move this to our next voting session or do we wait to them?
I mean, you've got to have something.
Yeah. I mean, we could go ahead and vote on, being agreeable to that, you know, as far as our next voting session, if that's the board's desire. And then they would, as soon as they decided, if they went along with, her board went along with, then they'd be a go.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was doing too, to make sure it was okay before we called a special meeting and move forward and get it done. We'll take care of it as we need to.
It was our name today.
April 2nd.
So April 2nd. So if we, if we put it on our.
Yeah, so if we took action second and your board meets and then you could go from there versus waiting until your board meets to decide, you're waiting on a vote from us.
I'm going to have a meeting the third, the fourth, fifth, whatever. Hopefully, whatever you can work out.
We'll do it the best we have.
If everything goes well, then you would have at least a go-ahead, you know, from this side, the board's own side.
It's not something that can be approved tonight, it's something that.
Do you need it tonight?
If, I would be grateful we could do it tonight, because I can move forward quicker, especially with everything we have going on in the office, it's like, we're crazy.
Is it a decision to move it tonight?
That's totally.
We can move it at 6 o'clock.
We need to.
Can we do that?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, if that's.
Did you not ask for that in your?
I did.
I've got to.
We can do that, yeah.
Okay.
I think everybody was just looking at the fact that you weren't going to meet until 15.
Yeah, right.
But I'm going to base that on, because I wasn't expecting to cancel yesterday's meeting either, so it's kind of the last minute decision, so yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Glenn? Thank you, ma'am. We will move that to the 6 o'clock voting session. Next up, presentation mutual aid agreement with the United States Army Garrison Fort Benning, Vice Sergeant Director Danny Thompson. Danny?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thank you. So what you have before you is the regional mutual aid. You'll notice it's pretty much the whole northern region here that's affected probably about eight counties in total. The background information on this, this is all hazard emergency mutual aid agreement that allows for the systematic approach to expedite local resources in the event that we should need them. And this agreement will be entered into with the U.S. Army Garrison Fort Benning, Georgia slash Dawson County. A little different than our automatic aid agreements. This is a mutual aid where it's a request for services. The basic concept behind that is it really takes the Army Headquarters out of it if there's an imminent life or death situation and we need those resources at that moment. This agreement will facilitate that and then the Army can backtrack to paperwork later. The agreement language is very similar to all of the other automatic and mutual aid agreements that you all have approved in the past for various projects. But also, one caveat in this is the federal government, they have a nine-year term, but it's required that it's reviewed every three years. Doesn't mean that it has to come back before the various boards, but the Army requires that they review it every three years and discuss any changes. As the standard, you can terminate either party clause, 30 days written notification. With that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Dan.
Now, is this for everybody?
Oh. Have we had this before?
You actually have not. This is something that the, they just now started requiring, but it's something that could be a huge benefit to you as we continue moving forward.
And it comes from the Department of Army, so all these counties' agreements will be the same?
That's correct.
Really?
Correct. So basically, if you notice in there for Dawson County, we have the Dawson County, the clerk, the chairman, myself, and the sheriff will all, he's already embedded it at the sheriff's office, but I was the one to bring it to you and the, and the board. Again, this will happen for each of the various counties as you see listed in there. And then at one point, there'll be one big happy sign with the general from the Army.
So legal doesn't necessarily have to go through this?
He's welcome to go through it. Yep. Probably should put at least a cursory glance over it. Happy to do that. I typically find that when you get a contract that comes down from the federal government level or a contract that comes down from here in the Army, it's take it or leave it.
I will take it.
I would concur with what you're saying. They don't even take, they don't coddle the, uh, the members. I don't like you changing the comp in there.
Well, I think we all know, watching the actions of military, regardless of whether they're working in the United States or outside, that they get the job done and they get it done in quick fashion. And so to have them on our side in a emergency situation is something that I think we definitely would be glad to have. We can just make a phone call and it doesn't have to go through all the red tape that most things have to go through. And they can provide lots of personnel and lots of equipment and they do it quick.
Do we need expeditions in case? Or not?
It's, it's not needed.
Okay.
Other questions for Dan?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All resources we can get when we need them.
I know it. I might have to call it up.
Ever done, that's right.
Hope we never have to use it.
All right, next up, we have a presentation request to write off transfer station bad debt, Chief Financial Officer Vicki.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I have before you a request to write off bad debt from the transfer station. This is a customer by the name of Break Straw Sanitation, and they owe a total of 98, 98, 76. It was our understanding that they were the disposal company for the city of Dawsonville, and so when they lost that contract and they were unable to pay what they owed us. So we've made numerous phone calls and sent letters and we asked, of course, they've been cut off a long time ago, but we talked to the attorney and they said, well, you can take it to magistrate, but it may cost you $2,000 to do that. So they kind of felt like the best option was just to go ahead and write it off, because it does not appear that they will either make payments or pay in full, as we tried to set up. They, they said at one point they would set up a payment plan and that didn't happen, so, you know, we just, we need to get it off our books and just, you know. You hate to say it, it's, it's part of doing business and we do our due diligence before we set up a customer. They go through a credit application, we check their credit references, we check with their bank and, you know, anything you do to typical business, but every once in a while, you have a customer that just doesn't do what they're supposed to do. So anyway, I'm requesting that we write this off and move forward.
Questions for Vicki. Is there, there not a way to, I know we do it on the, the medical side, is there not a way to sell the debt to a debt collector? I mean, it's usually depends on the dollar, but is there?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could attempt it. And at this point, I don't even know if there's still a business I've had.
Hey, I saw their truck two days ago.
Oh, did you really? Okay.
In Dawson County. Well, that's what you do in that process, you sell the debt to a debt collector. Now, it depends on how old it is, whether or not, it's 2018, so whether or not they'd be, that's probably whether they buy the debt or not, but they usually give you 20 cents on the dollar or something like that. That'd be something I would be interested in, just making a phone call.
I can talk to our contact that we have that collects our deals.
Yeah.
And just see if they'd be willing to take this off, just see if they can.
Maybe we get the $500 out of it, it's worth.
Yeah, it's nothing, so.
And I'd like to see us put something in place that this doesn't happen.
We do have it in place.
Well, it should have stopped. What happened?
I, I understand. Um, we changed from 15 days to 10 days. So 10 days after an invoice has been sent out and hasn't been paid, then it's considered late and then we start trying to collect on it.
And how would you stop from them dumping when they come out there if they're past due? I mean, I'm sorry.
No, I understand that and, you know.
Seems like there was a scenario where we had this before where they, they paid, but it was, a billing, a corporate billing is usually 30 days due and so by the time you get 30 days or 45 days.
So we tightened it up, so we try to keep these things from happening, so.
Other questions for Vicki? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, presentation special event business license application, Mountain Madness at Fossett Farms, planning director Jameson Kinley. James, it's my understanding that the original date has been canceled for this, obviously due to the COVID-19, but there is a different date that you want to tell us about.
Yes, sir. Currently, I've reached out to them. They have given me the May 16th as the, the date that they wish to host this event at the, at Fossett Farms. But they are wishing to do, the application is for Mountain Madness. If, if approved, May 16th would be the new date. It's located near the junction of Highway 136 and the A-3. This location has also been approved for another special event business license of the sunflowers that came before you last year. This event is a 15K trail run through their existing horse trails. There are two food vendors to be on location, both that have been approved by the Health Department. The site plan shows the trails crossing Fossett Farms Road twice, which is a county-maintained road, and that has been approved and signed off by the Public Works Director. The application is complete with all signatures from the Marshals, Planning, Sheriff, Fire Minister, Fire and EMS, and the County Manager. So I'll entertain any questions.
Questions for Jameson?
Could Mr. Chairman Van make a point of order on this issue? And I did talk, speak with Jameson about this earlier and I, I'm glad, because I think that when Jameson and I spoke, they were looking at an April date to reschedule. Later on in tonight's work session, item number nine, we're going to be discussing emergency action in the auditoriums. They're going to extend for 60 days, including this type of special permit. So, and May 16th is right on the, a little bit before the 60 days. So I just wanted the board to be mindful of that, knowing that we may be taking some action on this type of permit later on in the, at least in the work session and then voting on it at the 6 o'clock. So that's, that's what I would like to make to the board.
We're not moving this to the 6 o'clock? Did they request to move to 6 o'clock on this?
Originally, yes, because it was supposed to happen this weekend, but with it being postponed, I don't, I don't know if that's.
So now we're covering in that resolution, if you're speaking of, that anything that's in action would also be delayed?
Correct, 60 days.
Questions for Jameson? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have a presentation parade and assembly ordinance update, planning director Jameson.
Thank you, Chairman. Our parade and assembly ordinance was adopted October 27th, 2010. Before you, as a consideration of two amendments to this, to this ordinance, the first was proposed by the Chairman, so to allow the County Manager to approve recurring annual events. These events have already come up for the board for approval and it's, we're utilizing the same language as the special event business license that was approved last year. The second was actually proposed by a citizen of Dawson County. It states that the County Manager could consider waiving the fee upon written request. This decision would be made based on the size, nature, and county resources needed for the event. So currently, our parade and assembly ordinance, or parade and assembly permit is a 250 LR fee. This covers all events and gatherings of 10 people or more wishing to congregate on public right-of-way or public property. So if the, the person that proposed this was wanting to have.
So if the, the person that proposed this was wanting to have ten to fifteen people for the national day prayer on the courthouse steps and was asking to waive the $250 fee for this, for this application. So that was the intent of that update.
What would be the criteria for waiving fees?
So as of right now, our ordinance.
Boy, that could, this could be hard.
So right now, we don't have a criteria for waiving any fees. I, when you present any type of permit or application to the planning department, we only accept complete applications. And we, we will only process it with, with the fee. So it would have to be approved at the time of submittal. But we don't, currently, we don't have a, a process for the waiving of fees.
That could be so subjective. You know, so not maybe we'd need some one, two, three, and based on this, we can waive it. Well, because everybody else, you know how that appoint thing is, when you waive it from them and you need, why are you not waiving it from me? Well, I'm just going to, you, and here you go.
So the reason we have a $250 fee is because when a permit application goes in, you know, I, I take a look at it, the marshal's office, the, it's sent over to the fire department, public works, we have a lot of hands touching this. And it's one of those things that even if it is ten people, I still, I'm still required to get all, every single one of those signatures on it. So this is generally the nature of having that.
Nisticed costs.
Absolutely.
Two questions. Do we, how many permits do we do along these lines or for, do we, do we have a differentiation between nonprofit and for-profit? Are they all nonprofit for the most part?
Generally speaking, they're all nonprofit.
Okay. And if we waive it, do we run into, and this is a legal question, do we run into gratuitous clause for offering a service without a charge that's applicable to the man hours we go into?
It would depend upon the application and, and the reasons set forth therein. So I think that's somewhat of a fact, specific determination. I do, I have not actually looked at this item for tonight, but I think that would, that would probably something, be something we would need to investigate.
We run into some nonprofit that, I know one comes every year and we discuss that and I'm not being sure, because nonprofit comes to this county every year, but doesn't really stay here in county. It's always for, for side counties, something. Speaking of fireworks. I mean, that's, they come every year and we encourage them to try to find an organization here to get money to go to. And they.
I think they have him and said nobody was interested.
And I get the, you know, to me, somebody want to have a day of prayer, which is fifteen folks out here, it's not a big, heavy lift, I think, but I get it. I mean, I get the reason why they would ask for it. But the same, we just got to walk a fine line, I think, and be very careful to share it, to make it, we're not discriminatory at all in our.
You got, you got to be able to tell people how you, or I think you should, how you come, have you have come up with a decision. And you've got to tell, I mean, and it's got to be consistent, yeah, with everybody. So, and I get it too, you know, I understand, I understand where they're coming from, but I understand the other side, how we'll get attacked with other people. So, yeah, I, I think we need to look further into this.
The other aspect of the change that Jameson is presenting is what we discussed as the board, so that those that come every year and do the same thing every year and they don't cause any issues every year, they wouldn't have to come before the board to do that, but it could be done through county manager and Jameson's office. And that's the change.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. The attorney could look into that other aspect. That would be great.
Will do, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Jameson? Other questions? Thank you, Jameson. Next up, we have discussion of impact fees, planning and development director, Jameson Kinley. Jameson, you're up again.
Thank you, Chairman. All right, so the board has requested every six months that we review and look at our impact fees as to what has been collected and what we are, are spending those impact fees on. So since the last time that I stood before you and I gave you an update, I'm going to divide this up into two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. The rest of two thousand and nineteen, we collected approximately $160,000 in impact fees. Since January first, we have done significant, more than that, we've collected $724,000. So a total since then, I'm not throwing a lot of numbers at you, so if you're right and you know, just tell me to slow down or.
Can you summarize that report?
Absolutely. So the total since, since the last time we, we have given you an update, we've collected eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars in impact fees. So as you can see this year, we've done quite a few permits for impact fees. Those impact fees are divided up into four different categories, library, parks and rec, fire and roads. So as, currently, as I stand before you today, library has $201,000 in their impact fee funds. They are projected to spend approximately $39,000 on collection materials this year, and that is to keep up the levels of service of the county. Parks and Rec currently has $353,000 approximately. They have, in the, since I stood before you before, they have spent $434,130. And that went toward the veterans park rehab and senior center. So those are allocated there. They, they have the three hundred, keep the $3,000 in there for multiple different things over the course of this year. Obviously, we don't have it, we don't, I don't have a list of those things for parks and rec, but there's a lot of that is acquiring land, building new facilities and such, and that comes with the market as it, as it picks. The fire department, the fire department last year bought a truck, a fire truck and spent $122,000 out of impact fees on that truck. They currently have $120,000 in their impact fee budget. And this year, according to the capital improvement element, they are predicted to by a med unit, which is estimated cost at $250,000. I'm sure that it probably costs more than that, but that was a estimated cost when this was done back in two thousand and eighteen. So that's all in our capital improvement element.
As of January, all these numbers, that's the total as of January, March?
These, these numbers are total as of today. Yes, sir. And last, but certainly not least, would be roads. Roads have currently $143,000 in that impact fee fund. And the capital improvement element projects are the Kelly Bridge, full depth reclamation, Lunkin Campground Road Lane Addition and Widening, and the Sweetwater Beauty Road Widening and Resurfacing. So just as we look forward and project the next couple of months, I do have several developments that are going to come bringing in large quantities of, of permits, like up on Lunkin Campground, between Lunkin and Campground, we have the Jim Chatton Homes. They, they're, we might see 190 permits hit our, you know, hit our department at any one time. At around $2,500 a, a unit, we're probably looking at $480,000 of impact fees divided over these four things. So that's just one, one lump sum that we, as, as we move forward. So predicting, moving forward, it will continue to grow.
Jameson, can you send us a report about residential, how much we could see in residential and how much we could see in commercial?
Absolutely, absolutely. Residential versus commercial? I can tell you right now that about seventy of that, 885,000 that we've done in the last six months, about seventy-five percent of that is commercial. Mainly due to the, the Pindler Apartments going at the corner of fifty-three and Dawson Forest. But I will absolutely get you that report.
Other questions for Jameson?
Do we want to think about other things because it's been a year? Or has it been almost a year because we wore them to twenty-five years? Is that something?
We can always discuss.
I think we need to discuss it.
You can always do so.
I support, I supported not even luring them.
We can discuss it.
So is anybody interested in, is Rose going to back up?
Discuss it.
We'll put it on an agenda for discussion.
Okay, please do that.
Any other questions for Jameson? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have the discussion of the emergency action related to the run of virus to COVID-19. As you're well aware, the governor and the president, President Trump, has asked all of the citizens to not gather in larger groups of ten, and if so, then spread out and stay at least six foot apart. And so with all the things that have been going on, I had counsel put together a resolution that would keep us in the legal realm of where we needed to be as a board. So at this time, I will turn it over to counsel to explain what he's provided.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a point of order, I'm not sure if number eight was taken off the agenda or not tonight. I'm happy to go for number nine at this point, but just wanted to.
I got it down to number eight. I got, I got the board phone with number nine on this page.
Oh, I must have.
Me too.
I got eight is this and then number nine is board four.
Okay, I'm, I'm, mine, mine says eight, mine says eight, so maybe.
Pick it up, Bubba.
Okay.
Just go ahead.
I'll go ahead and keep my mouth shut.
You're fun. You're fun.
So anyway, we are listening, we are, as you well know, living in very interesting and urgent times at this point. And we're getting information from both the federal and state governments daily on how we're supposed to go about conducting the people's business in this time when we're all supposed to be either social distancing, sheltering in place, or somewhere in that spectrum of trying to keep everybody safe from this, this virus that we are at war with. So what we have done is taken the statutes and the Dawson County ordinances and put that together in the whereas statements that you see on the first page. And basically, this allows you to implement local emergency measures to protect the life and property of folks in Dawson County. By suspending any law code provision or regulation, which normally we would abide by, but which might bring people into danger, one of them being, for example, public hearings. We're suggesting that we put a sixty-day moratorium on public hearings. We are suggesting that county zoning administrative agencies are, be suspended for sixty days. Basically, put the basic vital things that the county needs to do would still take place. But at the same time, limiting the contact with people, not because we don't want to see the public, but we want to keep them safe. So, and I noticed that folks are doing a really good job here tonight, being kind of spread out and I want to commend you for that. One way that we both balance the, the need to conduct government function in public in the open is by broadcasting it by YouTube or by Facebook. I think we're doing that tonight. And we would suggest continuing doing that going forward. One of the things I had mentioned earlier in the meeting is permits related to gatherings. You know, we don't want to shut folks down. I mean, I personally am not going to go run nine point three miles because it might kill me, but I think, you know, that's a good thing for, for the community, but it's just not something we can do at this time. And so really trying to stem the tide and, and the phrase you hear on news, flatten the curve. Dawson County, this is designed to help you all help your citizens and help the nation and state and the nation in, in flattening the curve by suspending some of the public functions that you normally would do as a matter of course for sixty days. And then we will revisit it. We could revisit it at any time. I mean, this is a very fluid situation, so things may change. And certainly, this can be amended at, at any point. But right now, it basically limits us to doing contract budgeting and physical operations to continue the continuity of government. We're not going to, we will still meet the public and we're not going to lock the doors to folks, but we're going to strongly encourage them to watch via YouTube or Facebook or whatever the, the online mechanism is. And, but for those who do attend, we'd like them to observe. And so this sort of takes into account that everybody is strongly encouraged, if you're going to attend these meetings, that you observe the basic protocols of social distancing, which we've heard so much about. I am happy to answer any questions. I may not know all the answers at this point, because like I said, this is a fluid situation. But this was, these kind of proclamations, excuse me, resolutions, emergency proclamations and resolutions are being done throughout local governments and state. And we think this is the best way to balance both the need to have an open and public government and continue vital services and functions of the government at the same time to the greatest extent possible in keeping with federal guidelines and state guidelines to protect the public from this insidious virus.
Questions for counsel?
I was just, I was just wondering, and this, this may be too picky. This is at the very end of it, under two point five, and it's number F. And it says, citizens who choose to attend any open meeting of the council shall be requested to observe social distancing. Do we need counsel in there or do we need commissioners or do we need, I mean, the council sounds like to me it's the city.
You're right.
So we don't have a.
And I think that that's just a, a planned out typo on our part.
Okay.
And that can be changed to, I would, I would change that to.
Open meeting.
Open meeting.
Okay.
And that.
Yes, that's, yeah.
So, and again, we are doing these types of resolutions for both city and county governments. Unfortunately, the template that we are using, the first one was for a city, and that's why that's in there.
Yeah.
Honest, you know, just being honest as I can, that, that we didn't catch up.
So we can leave that as citizens who choose to attend any open meeting shall the question to observe social distance protocols while sitting in the gathering?
Yes, sir.
Other questions for counsel?
Are the other counties or cities using that sixty days?
Yes, ma'am. With our, with our clients, and we represent several local governments, we're doing the sixty days based upon the latest information that we have received. I think the original draft of this was done Monday. And, and so sixty days seems like to us, put something in place that gives us, you know, a cushion there. Again, it can be revisited if they, you know, if the Lord would provide it and then they come up with something that knocks this thing out in thirty days, I mean, we can always rescind it. At the same time, it may be that at the end of sixty days, we have to extend it for another sixty days. The board, at your discretion, can do it as, as long as you want to. I would suggest at a minimum of sixty days at least.
Other questions for counsel?
Not a question, just a point that kind of touches on what Julie's question was, is I commend the leaders that we have in this room tonight that are, that are heading this thing up and keeping a pulse on what's happening on a daily basis. So the sixty days today might be guidance that's given from the feds or from the state. But with Danny Thompson leading up the pandemic plan and Dave Hedley helping implement that and of course Chairman Thurman, I think, has been great in giving the daily updates to citizens and communication.
to citizens and communication, and I think it's just a point to say that, that we as a community are staying on top of communicating and staying on top of the information as it comes available, and doing everything we can to continue business as usual as best we can in order to keep everybody safe. So thank y'all for, for your leadership and everything that you're doing to, to help move us forward through this time. Any other questions for Council? I would request of the board, if it be your desire, that we move this to the 6 o'clock, and I would like to put it as number one on the agenda tonight, because we have some things that fall under that later on in the agenda that would fall under into the section 2.2, existing regulatory permits that are being asked for, that would extend them out past that 60 days as well. Is that good, that we want to move that to 6 o'clock?
Yes.
All right, and we will read that fully at the 6 o'clock meeting, and everyone can know exactly every word that it does say. Good. Now we'll go to the presentation of Board of Parliament. Department of Family and Children Services Jennifer Wright, replacing Edwin Luper. Mr. Luper has served for a very long time and done a very good job for the citizens of Dawson County. That term is April 2020 through March 2025. If you don't know, Ms. Jennifer Wright is with our Sheriff's Department, and would be a very excellent candidate to serve on this board in the role that she has with our Sheriff's Department. And so I'll entertain any questions you might have about her. Otherwise, we will move that to the next voting session. County Manager report.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, key indicator report for the month of February, as well as a list of agreements and contracts in January 2020 are in your packet. Simmons Properties has closed all its domestic retail properties, which includes Northeast Georgia Premium Outlets, closed effective from 3/18/2020 through 3/29/2020, it's a two-big period. I continue working with ACCG State and other agencies to stay updated on current information related to the COVID-19. The posting can be found on the homepage of the county website, DawsonCounty.org. Strongly encourage citizens to look at that website as we continue to go along. Any information that they are not seeing on there that they'd like to see, I'd like to have them to be able to contact myself directly, or Laura Faulter, our PIO. Also, on our recycled trailers, I'd like to bring to the board's attention that due to the contents of those trailers, we are proposing that we close those trailers at their locations and until May the 1st, and that if you have recyclable materials that you typically would bring to those locations, that the board would allow those materials to be brought to the transfer station. This is for the safety of our employees that are handling that material, along with the citizens as well.
When's that effect, now?
It, it would be going to effect now, yes, ma'am. They'd be picked up and then until May the 1st. And David, he can speak further on that, if you have any questions regarding the.
David, come on down and kind of explain what, what they're seeing.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand it.
Why, it's been, why it's being contaminated.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and County Manager, Heather, thank you for letting me have the opportunity. I brought to our County Manager's attention earlier today, each of these three trailers, I want everybody to understand that we have employees that have to handle every single piece of this recycling material that comes out of here. Just today, we found a bag of tissues. It was probably a tissue bag that was in somebody's bathroom or something, got mixed with their recycling. I made the decision, say it right here in front of everybody, to dump the whole trailer. It's not worth the well-being of my staff or the general public to handle that. I asked the question, how often do we see this type of stuff? Because I don't personally separate it. It happens often, so I called David and requested that until this, we get a handle as a community and as a nation, that we suspend that. We do not see that problem what comes to our transfer station, because it's one or two bags, those bags are open, put right in the compactor, and then the volume obviously is much less at any given time. So it's, the, the primary purpose of it is just for the safety of our workers that are out there at any given time.
So it won't be recycled, it's just going to be trash?
No, that particular trailer was, yes, we, I made the decision.
I mean, if we bring our recycling, if we're down wash mine.
We will continue to recycle it, we'll continue to go in the compactor, everything out there. It's the, it's the outer three, three recycling trailers that we don't really have ultimate control until it gets to our facility. And again, we have to touch every piece of it at some point to move, by hand, to move it from one location to the other. We've made changes at our transfer station in general so that we don't have to handle household municipals all the way. So this is just in line with our changes that we've made locally at our facility.
Well, then state is, I mean, when it says to make first, what are you thinking about? Revisiting this and, and opening it up, or are you thinking about?
Much like Council said, if we find something that can wipe this issue away, I think that it's, it's a success. I mean, there's no doubt they're getting used on those outer, outer areas, certain fire stations number two.
Well, it's my understanding, and somebody I forgot to mention to thank earlier was Dr. Anderson over there playing Solitaire on his phone. But it's, it's my understanding that it's not, like mail that comes in, or stuff that we touch doesn't necessarily carry the virus per se. I get your feeling.
I saw that it is.
Well, maybe, and that's where I'd be good for clarification.
This constantly changes when people find things, and so latest I said, saw that it could live on cardboard for up to 24 hours.
Yes, that's what I saw.
But these are going to be under ideal conditions. You know, I don't think we have to keep Amazon away from our doors, and everybody's wearing gloves, and I don't think that for the cardboard packaging, very far.
Got you. Okay, thank you. I think one of the things too, and we'll discuss this later on after we get kind of through, one of these coronavirus issues that we're dealing with, is that we're seeing a lot of mixture in these trailers anyway, that's not all, people are not doing everything they should do in reference to it being something that can be recycled. It's an opportunity for some citizens to say, okay, I'll just go by there and throw all of my garbage into this trailer and contaminate some of the stuff that is recyclable. So that's something we'll have discussion about later on, but he can give us percentages of that based on what his people are seeing later on, as we discuss that a little bit deeper, but this goes back to the old adage, you know, give them an inch, they'll take them out, and that is happening in these locations as well.
That's why you're hand sorting it now in the man hours, and I remember you talking about. We, we hand sorted for that very reason. We started out this process with these trailers, just dumping it straight in there. We were seeing astronomical fees from the company that separates it, so now we've started hand sorting it, and there is a small percentage that is not. And with what's going on in the world and community today, it was really eye-opening to me when I saw this, whoa, 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 no, this can't happen, let me make a phone call. So that's, that's, that's the purpose for it being kind of real quick today.
Will we have to pay?
No, ma'am. If it's just recycling in our facility, it's, it's free. We recycle for free there, and we'll help you put it in there. We'll, we'll still do everything that we have always done in the past. Really, the only change you should see at our facility, from a municipal solid waste standpoint, is we, we shouldn't see anything sitting on the floor. We're taking it, getting it down, getting it out of there, and trying to, we spray it down every night with a antiviral antibacterial spray. It smells like moldy. So you smell moldy, that's a good thing, that means.
That's right. Any other questions for David? Thank you, sir.
Just a final comment. I do and would like to extend my appreciation to the staff for their compliance with both the regulatory requirements from the President, the Governor, and ACCG. Like I said, we are in contact on a regular basis. Things are changing daily, almost hourly it seems, and so it's hard to put everything down into one area and get a definite methodology, but we are working through that, and those postings will be on the, on the webpage so that everybody can see them, and the videos that'll be posted as well. So that concludes my report, Chairman.
Questions for the County Manager? David, let me say that I want to thank you and your staff for all the hard work that y'all are doing, and I want to call out Laura for sure, because I know for a fact that she has still been here at 7 o'clock at night, or 7:30, making sure that that website is updated so that citizens can see that. All your staff are doing a good job, working hard in this situation, and coming to work every day, you know, with all the things that are going on around them, so I really appreciate your leadership there and all of your staff and their leadership to their people, keeping the county up and running. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, County Attorney report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report, and we have no need for executive session. I would just say that even under these trying times, it's always a pleasure to be here, enjoy my opportunities to get, to pinch hit for Angie when, when she has what she calls upon me, and I would just like to acknowledge the board and staff for their quick action on the emergency measures that we are contemplating this evening, and also acknowledge all the medical professionals in Dawson County and our first responders, and all the county staff who are doing their best to keep everyone safe during this trying time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody got any questions for the Attorney? Thanks, sir, that's all we have. We are adjourned at the 6 o'clock, and we'll have our regular voting session. Thank you for your attendance.